Okay, good afternoon, everybody. And before I call the meeting to order, I just wanted to let everybody know that Wendy Hill couldn't be with us today. Her father passed away last night. So our thoughts and our prayers are with her today and in the next couple of days as she deals with that. So just wanted to pass that on to committee. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Has the roll call been taken?
Yes, and we have four.
Thank you very much. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, then we will move to the adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting held on August the 12th, 2020. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Love, seconded by councillor Redear. All in favor? Thank you very much. That's carried. We have no delegations at this time, so we will move on to the general managers' monthly report. And I'll ask Carol if she can go forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome, Board of Directors of Renford County Housing Corporation. The report highlighting some of the activities for the previous month is starting on page one. And its information, applicant tenant issues is number one. So we're looking here at our rent cafe information, which are, which is our applicants. So in July, we had eighty-four seniors, two-hundred-and-sixty-four adults, and one-hundred-and-seventy-five families eligible on our waitlist with Renford County Housing Corporation. And I'm sure you're all interested in how our online applications are going. And just to give you a little bit more information on that, in August, we had eighty-one applications received. Twenty-four of them were online, and fifty-four were paper. As of yesterday, I don't know how many paper we had, but we had seventeen applications received online just in the month of September. So people are enjoying the online application for sure. So moving on to page two of my report, the top graph just, or top chart just highlights the total number of applicants as at July 31st. And then our next chart are the move-ins and move-outs and our transfers that we have within. So just a little bit of a note on this one. To date, at the end of July, we've only had fifty-six move-outs with Renford County Housing Corporation. So just keep in mind that that is very low for us. In 2019, we had our lowest number of move-outs, which was just under the hundred. So I suspect that this year is going to be even less than that. So that's going to make for a very tight waitlist, no movement. People start to get a little bit excited about that when there's no movement within Renford County Housing Corporation, because applicants will sit longer. Now, our applications are less because we did that mass mail-out in December, updating everybody's application. And with that, some people didn't respond, and therefore, we had to take them off the waitlist. So I think over the next year, year and a half, you're going to see that waitlist start to build again, once people realize that they're not there. So moving on to item B, which is tenant issues, we have our N5s and N6s. So unlike some things that have ceased during COVID-19, the social issues and some of the illegal activities that have happened within Renford County Housing Corporation have not ceased. So those notices are continuing to go out to the residents where we have some very difficult situations. So the top of page three, we start our financial package, and we're going to begin with the operating budget. So the consolidated treasurer's report for the month of July is attached for your review. And as it appears today, it looks as if we are going to be underspent, given that our move-outs are considerably less and that we've had to slow down our preventative maintenance due to COVID. It, it looks like we're going to be underspent in 2020. So now we'll move on to the capital budget for Renford County Housing Corporation, which is attached as an appendix for your review. And here, we are also receiving some very good pricing, which makes us underspent in our capital. Now, we were, I think you'll recall, I had said that we had put out our expression of interest to folks early in the year, knowing that we may have some difficulties with COVID. And even though we moved quickly, some of our partners didn't move as quickly as we did. For example, some of the engineering studies that we needed before we could develop scopes of work were slow to get to us. In fact, as an example, for Nelson and McKee Street, where we're repairing the roofs over the balconies, that was just received, so it's just going out to tender now. So although we, we are pursuing, things are a little bit slower. And surprisingly enough, we've received some very good pricing. So you'll notice, if you look down on the surplus deficit line, we have $390,000 in a surplus at this point in time. Although we do have some capital items that have eaten up a little bit of that, about $152,000. At the bottom of our non-TCA projects, you're going to notice a few lines, bathrooms, flooring, appliances, accommodations. So some of those are heavily weighted on our move-outs, so they may be less as well. So we'll just keep that in mind as we move along through the year. Item C, current tenant arrears at the end of July. You'll notice that our June previous arrears were totaling $86,390. We have creeped up to $88,162, which represents 120 tenants in some sort of a balance. So when we look at this, please keep in mind that we do have a social services relief fund, where we've identified some monies to assist with rental arrears during COVID. So that will be coming back to you as to how we will be able to help our residents with Renford County Housing Corporation and other residents within the county of Renfrew who are having difficulties paying their rent during COVID. Item number three is just a COVID update, just to let you know how things are going. Our staff are back in their offices, doing the day-to-day work that we've been trying to do during this period. Our, our maintenance staff are still out in the field, doing everything that they need to be doing, keeping our building safe, doing that extra sanitizing. So I really want to give a big thank you to our staff. They have had to change very quickly and adapt very quickly to all the rules and regulations and extra precautions that we've had to put, put out there because of COVID. Yet they're still coming to work and they're still doing their job. So we really very much appreciate that. And a big thank you to our tenants as well, because they've been very patient with us. We weren't doing a lot of regular work orders, only emergencies up until about a month ago. So they've been extremely good, very patient, and we're getting to everybody and everything as time allows for it. The communications to our tenants, we continue to provide our tenants with a number of newsletters and posters. And we try to keep them as up-to-date on our current practices and what's going on out there in the community. We had a big gift this year from the United Way and the Renford County Health Unit. They provided us with 400 cloth masks and 1,000 disposable masks for distribution to our tenants. So that's been a lot of fun getting that out there. Staff have been very excited about that. So that's one of the other items that we've been busy doing, as well as continuing with all of our reach-outs. And my last item for today's report is just an update to let you know that we've been doing some training as things go along. We had a privacy law in housing, one-hour web and X that we participated in, just giving staff an update on the privacy rules for staff and tenants and the best practices around video and surveillance equipment and how to manage privacy breaches and freedom of information in the housing context. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report for today.
Thank you very much for that, Carol. So we will move back to information item number one, the applicant and tenant issue. One A is the Rent Cafe Community Housing. Any questions or comments? Item one B are the tenant issues. We'll move to number two, which is the operating budget. Any questions or comments? I'd just like to say thank you, Carol, that it's nice to see our maintenance staff can get back on with their regular work assignments and get caught up from the gap that COVID certainly challenged them with. So we hope that can continue. Item one, two B, I'm sorry, is the capital budget. Any questions? And two C are the current arrears. And I know Carol and her staff, as well as Laura and Social Services, are certainly working on trying to resolve some of these rent arrear issues that our residents are facing. So we'll get more information. Should I stay in the next month, Carol? Thank you. Item three is our COVID update. Any questions or comments? Item three C is the community outreach. Three B, I'm sorry. And item number four is the training. Yes, councillor Jackenell.
Mr. Chair and committee members, I'm glad to see that this web-type training continues, especially, you know, in times when people can't meet face-to-face. I think it's crucial that communications take place between, you know, the various entities. Best practices in regards to privacy issues and even electronic protocols, I think, is so important, because the whole world has changed in the last six months, you know. And I think it's crucial that this training continues. So thank you for the report.
Thank you, councillor Jackenell. Any other questions or comments? So then can I get a mover and a seconder for the adoption of the monthly report as presented? Moved by councillor Grill, seconded by councillor Rheinwald. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. Any items for new business? Seeing none, the date of our next meeting will be Wednesday, October the 14th, 2020. Can I get a mover and a seconder to adjourn? Moved by councillor Love, seconded by councillor Redear. All in favor? That's carried. So our Renford County Housing Committee meeting is adjourned, and we will move into our Social Services then. So I'll call the meeting of the Social Services Committee to order. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we'll move to the adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting held on October 12th, 2020 and August 26th, 2020. Can I get a mover and a seconder? Moved by councillor Love, seconded by councillor Grill. Are there any additions, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote to adopt the minutes. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. So we'll move to item six, which is our Social Service Department report. And I will ask Laura to present that report.
Thank you, Chair, members of Social Services Committee. My report is very brief this month. Item number one is to keep you informed about the Social Services Relief Fund Phase Two program. Attached are the documents that speak to the second round of funding. And it, it is also very detailed in terms of a business case. You may recall at our special meeting of Social Services ahead of county council last month, we did bring forward our plan for the business case. So I'm happy to report that the business case is very close to being submitted. It is due this Friday, and we are very hopeful that the team that will be reviewing our application or our business case will approve our funding. This is a very good news story for us, and we're very hopeful that this moves forward. So thank you for your support in our application for this particular fund. Item number two is a legal challenge of the amendments made under Bill 184, Section 83. And it's an appendix attached. It's a resolution from the city of St. Catherine's regarding their support to the city of Toronto in their legal challenge of the amendments made under Bill 184, Section 83. So in particular, I can speak to this very, just to kind of give you an idea of what this is. Under the current law, all disputes over evictions and rent arrears must be heard by the landlord and tenant board, some which results in rent repayment plans. Bill 184, this particular section, would allow landlords to cut the board out of the equation and offer tenants their own repayment plan. So if a tenant refuses the landlord's offer, they can still take their matter before the board. But some critics have been saying that it's more likely the vulnerable tenants will sign on to shady repayment plans, because they don't know how to navigate the system. This is part of what was presented to the city of Toronto and some of the information that they were dealing with in terms of launching their legal challenge. So the general premise is that if a repayment plan is set up between a landlord and a tenant, then they, they basically bypass the hearing process at the landlord and tenant board. So I bring this forward as an information item, so that you see what is happening out there. I believe the situation in the city of Toronto may be different than what we experience here in the county of Renfrew. I think that rent arrears is a very touchy issue with people all over the province of Ontario. And certainly in Toronto, they've, they've seen some very unique challenges with this particular bill and this particular section, where a landlord who enters into an agreement, a repayment agreement with a tenant, just has to bring the fact that they've entered this agreement in front of the tribunal, and that becomes the order. I also, while it's not identified on our list today, I wanted to just give you a quick update regarding the previous conversation we had about a universal basic income. I endeavor to come back to committee to let you know that we've done some further research. And what I can tell you at this point in time is that the research is inconclusive. The universal basic income is strictly a concept at this time. It hasn't been built. And I would suggest that as things move forward in terms of the universal basic income conversation, that when there is more information, that I bring it forward at that time, so that you have the information in front of you to make a very informed decision or provide direction. And that, Chair Bros, concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. So we will move back to information item number one, the Social Services Relief Fund Phase Two Program. Any questions or comments? I just want to say thank you to Laura and also Carol and her staff. From discussions I've had with Laura, I guess it was Carol's staff that certainly came forward in that very short timeframe that the staff had to put together a business case with some very, very great input into where some of that money could be directed in order to improve the, the facilities for some of our residents. So once again, I certainly want to thank Laura and Carol and their staff for being so quick to respond and provide the information to present that business case. In our discussions that Laura and I had, Laura has told me as well that some of the counties did not even have the resources, considering the short amount of time to put together a business case, so they won't even be, they won't even be going down that road to try and get that second phase of funding. So hats off to Laura and our staff here at Renford County that they got on that as quickly as they have. Information item number two is the legal challenge of the amendments made under Bill 184, Section 83. Any questions or comments? Yes, councillor Rheinwald. You're muted, councillor Rheinwald.
There.
That's better. Much better.
Okay, I'll shut up now. Anyway, through you to Laura. I'm just wondering what your, what your thoughts of, with regards to the legal challenges on the amendments. Do you have any plans in place if we head in that direction, or would you rather not see it that way at all?
Through you, Chair, to councillor Rheinwald. We had a very good, fulsome discussion about this with the management team at Social Services, because this is gaining some momentum in some of the larger urban areas. But we deal directly with landlords in the county of Renfrew here in terms of setting up repayment plans through our homelessness prevention program, helping tenants secure housing. And we, we've come to believe, and, and we don't have the data in front of me right now, but we can certainly get it. But we have terrific landlords, for the most part, in the county of Renfrew. They've been very supportive. They've been very helpful. They easily enter into repayment plans to stabilize housing. We've had quite a few landlords where that is what they're looking for. They just want to get the tenant on track. So, you know, we're not seeing this, I think, certainly from what I'm hearing, we're not seeing the same kind of things that maybe some of the larger areas are seeing. You know, in a community like the county of Renfrew, if I can speak, I think, you know, we, we all live and shop and, and are in the community. So, you know, when you see your landlord and you see the business out, with the business sector out in the community, it, it becomes a very different situation than a numbered company that, that you would never see, maybe in a place like Toronto, or a landlord that maybe has no relationship with, or very limited relationship with their tenants. But we have found, for the most part, that our landlord-tenant relationships and the landlords that we have in the county of Renfrew have been very supportive. So, you know, this particular amendment, Section 83, kind of replicates what we are currently doing, where we enter into these repayment plans with landlords. And we see lots of tenants working on that. So I think if, if the legal challenge goes forward with the city of Toronto, it will make changes potentially to this section, and, and I'm not sure how it would look. I, I don't think we are in the same position as the city of Toronto, but, but that's just me speaking from a brief conversation with my staff the other day. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Follow-up?
Yes, supplementary.
So I guess what you're telling me, then, that one size doesn't fit all. It's, it's similar to, to a lot of the other things that have been happening at Renfrew County, where things might work great in Ottawa or Toronto or Windsor, but they certainly are not the same in the rural areas, i.e. Renford County. I think we're seeing a lot of that these days. And let's hope we can, we can fight our battles like we have in some of the other areas, and hopefully, we can win on this one, too.
Thank you, councillor Rheinwald. And I know Laura and I had quite a discussion about this as well. And Laura has informed me that this, this amendment challenge is just in the beginning phase in the process, and that at this point, there's no urgency for committee and/or county council to make a firm decision, one way or the other. It's probably an opportunity to wait and see if there's more information that comes forward as this process moves further along. So that's all I would have to add to it. Are there any other questions? Yes, councillor Rheinwald.
I just want to caution that we don't wait too long. You know, I, you know, there's a point in time where we got to give a little bit of pushback and let them, people know that we may or may not be satisfied with what, you know, what is being implied. And that possibly we should, you know, send out a letter stating about our concerns being in the, in a rural, in rural area and the impacts that it may, may have on us. So anyways, I've just thrown that out there, and, you know, maybe it's something we can discuss in the near future.
Is that a recommendation that you would like committee to bring back to county council?
For discussion purposes. For discussion purposes, yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, then we will move on to our Ontario Works Division Report, and I'll ask Andrea if she can present that report.
Thank you, Chair Burrows. Through you to committee. Hello, everyone. Nice to see you this month. The Ontario Works Report starts on page fifty of your electronic report. Item number one is the Ontario Works caseload statistics. So you will note that we are continuing to be on a slight downward trend with our ongoing caseload. We discussed some of the factors surrounding this, these numbers last month at our meeting. I do believe that when the federal candidate emergency response benefit ends early October, we may see our numbers climbing back up again. I think a lot of people have been able to benefit from the fight with the federal benefits that are available, and that that may change when, when that is scheduled to end. Also, just to give a little more information, and again, we did discuss this last month, but the caseload statistics only represent the ongoing caseload, so that, that's people that meet income and asset thresholds for eligibility for our program and receive a monthly payment from us. But it doesn't capture necessarily the full extent of some of the financial needs that the community has. We have done a lot of applications for our emergency assistance efforts throughout the pandemic. And again, as we talked about last month, this is not registered as an ongoing case because it's issued as a one-time financial benefit, where we can issue up to forty-eight days of entitlement. We have seen quite an increase in twenty twenty of our emergency assistance demands processed so far in twenty twenty, between January to July of twenty twenty, a hundred and eighty-four emergency assistance applications. And in, in comparison to the same timeframe last year, we only processed twenty-eight. So we have seen an increased demand throughout the pandemic for the emergency assistance. So although it doesn't translate into the ongoing caseload numbers, there has been that, still the, the financial need coming to us in a, in a slightly different way. Item number two is our homelessness prevention program statistics. This program we deliver in, in partnership with Renfrew County Housing Corporation, and this has been a very busy program for us up over the past few months. We did discuss some of the trends that we're seeing last month in terms of the increase in demand for this program. You'll note in July, we were able to assist sixty-six families through this program. And I did indicate last month that I would bring back some more detailed information about some of the spending trends. I've attached three charts as to this report, providing some comparative data around our spending in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Just highlight for you a few of the, you know, the important areas that, that I noted from reviewing the data. First of all, just regarding the categories that we're able to provide assistance through this program, and most are clear what the categories are, but I just, did just want to note that the category hardship is, captures assistance that we provide to people for temporary shelter. So people who have been rendered homeless either due to a natural disaster such as a fire or a flood, or, you know, a series of unfortunate circumstances that have rendered that person homeless. So that's those numbers. We have seen some growing need in that area throughout the pandemic, as you'll note in the charts. We also had some high numbers in that category in the spring of twenty nineteen during the state of emergency due to the flooding. The third chart that's on page fifty-four of your report shows the spending in the homelessness prevention program from early to July of twenty nineteen compared to twenty twenty. And committee will note in there that we are higher in our spending for twenty twenty in all categories except for hydro arrears, which I do expect will, will change shortly. I think the reason that the hydro arrears were showing in that chart as lower for twenty nineteen is that traditionally we do see a lot of applications for hydro, help with hydro arrears in the spring, when the hydro companies are allowed to disconnect services. But this year, there was the ban put in place during the pandemic, which has only recently been lifted. So we're just starting to see those applications coming in for help with hydro arrears, and they are starting in rather, rather fast and furious. So I expect those categories will be climbing shortly. So continues to be a busy area for staff. As discussed last month, we were able to provide a boost to our homelessness prevention program budget through funding through the Social Services Relief Fund, so please be able to provide a higher level of support to the community in that area due to the help from the funding through the Social Services Relief Fund. Moving item, on to item number three is a note regarding the Hydro One Disconnection Ban. It's extended. So as discussed as well, last month, July thirty-first, the Ontario Energy Board had lifted the prohibition against disconnection of hydro services due to non-payment. So through the homelessness prevention program, we have seen applications from clients whose hydro provider is Ottawa River Power, or, you know, Renfrew Hydro, some of the other companies. However, Hydro One did make an internal decision that they were not going to start issuing disconnection notices, and they're continuing to provide some extra time for residents to negotiate repayment plans and to catch up on their bills. So I think that's, you know, fortunate for some of those tenants or that are living in buildings with Hydro One service, that they'll have a little more time. And we likely won't see the full extent of, of the demand through the homelessness prevention program in the hydro arrears category until Hydro One's ban is lifted as well. Item number four is just with respect to a fire that occurred in Pembroke in August. It was a two-unit residential building and resulting in the displacement of five tenants. As per the protocols, a Canadian Red Cross was called in to respond and provide emergency assistance during the first seventy-two hours. And following that, our staff were connected to assist with providing some further support and temporary shelter, again, through the homelessness prevention program. And the final item in my report is regarding some innovation in the area of virtual training through that the Ontario Municipal Social Services Association has developed. So OMSA has partnered with the Crisis and Trauma Resort Institute and Achieve Centre for Leadership. And they've developed a series of one-hour training webinars for social services staff. And we were able to purchase the licenses for these twenty training webinars that our staff can view anytime that fits in their schedule between now and, and June twenty twenty-one. So I like to echo some of the comments made by Council Jackno earlier on. I, I definitely agree. It's, it's very important to me that our staff remain up to date on, you know, current information and, and social issues and some of the supports that are out there to, so that we can best serve our clients. And it's certainly been a challenge throughout the pandemic to keep up the professional development opportunities that we've been able to bring to staff in the past. So I was really pleased to see this level of innovation from OMSA, and it's something that certainly, hopefully, our whole department and maybe even throughout the corporation can take advantage of some of these training webinars and a new way of, of keeping our staff up to date and connected. Thank you, Chair Burrows. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Andrea. So we will move back to information item number one, which is the Ontario Work Caseload Stats. Any questions or comments? Item number two is the Homelessness Prevention Program. Item number three is the Hydro One Disconnection Ban Extended. And just for committee's information, this, this ban being extended is only on behalf of Hydro One. It hasn't been incorporated with Pembroke Hydro or Ottawa Valley Power Corp. or Renfrew Hydro. So in those areas where we have residents, that ban is now lifted, and they are looking at moving forward with disconnection. So my understanding from Andrea is that they'll be working with our clients to make sure that they get some help in dealing with their hydro arrears. Item number four is the Pembroke Fire. And once again, a thank you to Andrea and her staff for coming to the aid of the people that were displaced as a result of the fire. Item number five is the virtual training. Seeing no other questions or comments, then we will move on to our Childcare and Early Years Division Report, and I'll ask Judy to present that report.
Thank you, Chair. Members of committee, nice to see everybody virtually. My report begins electronically on page fifty-five. I have included for you today in item one our reopening statistics. I think in terms of my report as a whole, this really tells the, the story of where we're at in Renfrew County. So just to summarize, the statistics are on page fifty-seven to sixty-one. We have three-quarters of our programs open. We're serving about half the children that we normally would serve. The most astonishing statistic in all of this is that we're up from a hundred and sixteen staff to a hundred and forty staff, serving half the children. And that is because of our, our low ratio numbers and the need to, to clean. Staff can't float between rooms anymore, and also the screening that's taking place. So a good boost for the economy in, in the county of Renfrew in terms of staffing. And also very nice to see that we can find the staff because very often ECEs are very hard to find. Sorry, just have to adjust my screen here. So item number two to eight in my report are various guidelines and directives from the province in terms of our startup, as well as some internal guidelines, some health unit guidelines for your information. I can go through them line by line, but there's quite a lot of them, and, and they're quite in-depth. And basically, in a nutshell, what you see from number two to eight are all the rules and regulations we have to abide by in terms of opening. Item number six is just an information item. It's the Niagara Region Childcare Resolution, asking the province for appropriate funding or adequate funding in terms of childcare. We at the county of Renfrew, I believe we are in good standing with our funding, and I think the provinces responded very fairly and adequately to, to our needs. So that, Chair, concludes my report today.
Thanks very much, Judy, and I know this has been a lot of work for you and continues to be, as not all of our childcare centers are at this point reopened, maybe working in that direction. But from the conversations we had earlier in the week, you did tell me that at least you're managing the numbers of parents that have applied for childcare spaces, and we're not facing a huge backlog, which is good news. So moving to information item one, it's the Licensed Childcare Reopening Statistical Report. Any questions, comments? Yeah, Council Jackno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in correlation with another item from the Social Services Committee that I, I just didn't get in to ask a question about. But Judy's talking about extra staffing, et cetera. You know, because of the demands, because of hygiene and cleaning and getting people, et cetera. More jobs in the, in the community, which is very good. There was a question from Social Services that dealt with last month with the relief fund. I guess, what was it called? The universal basic income, rather. And we had had some concerns about municipalities being hit with that additional cost. When you look around now at some of the businesses that are, you know, trying to cope with just survival, the food and entertainment businesses, for example, I hasten to say that you're probably going to see in the next six months, some bankruptcies that, you know, people weren't, weren't considering. I mean, people have been in business for a long time, may be able to ride the waves. But new entrepreneurs who've gone to the bank and borrowed money to start a new, fresh business, and now they're encountering, you know, additional costs, such as the hygiene issue, et cetera. I'm not going to ramble on, but I'm just saying it's difficult. And it's good that Laura had indicated that this universal basic income at this particular time is a concept. Because I think that concepts have to, have to be moved further into the future until, until people get back on their feet. For example, in nineteen eighteen, nineteen nineteen, the Spanish influenza, you know, the, the gross domestic product was negative seven percent, and ironically, during the COVID influenza, it's the same. It's minus seven percent. So that shows that history repeats itself, that there'll be a long time for recovery, and that we're all going to have to be diligent, and I think try and support those small businesses as much as we can, even with the difficulties that they're being faced with. They may be faced with tentative bankruptcies. One other thing I just wanted to comment on, I, you know, you're dealing with children, et cetera. You're going to the dentist. If you don't have a dental plan, I was just at the dentist, and the additional cost for me to go there over and above last year because of the COVID, you know, sanitation, et cetera, was sixty-five dollars. I mean, you multiply that with, you have four or five children. That's the additional cost, not only the, you know, the, the basic visit cost that you're going to encounter. So I'm done rambling. I'm just saying we have to support local businesses as much as possible. And as far as a universal basic income, again, who pays for that? Will the municipalities be faced with that? We don't know at present time, but hopefully not. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Jackno. I certainly tend to agree with everything you've said, so. Hopefully, we can see our way through this pandemic, and I know some of the schools now are facing some challenges as well. So let's hope we don't see a second wave. Item number two is the Childcare and Early Years Programs Reopening Update. Item three is Childcare and Early On Sector Funding, the reconciliation and the September approach. Item four are the operational, is the Operational Guidance for September for Childcare and Early Years Programs. Item five is the Federal State Restart Funding. Item six is the Niagara Region Childcare Resolution. Just wondering if committee has any preference to support this resolution, to defer it, to withdraw it? Or we can just leave it on? Yes, Council Jackno.
Can you just refresh me basically on what it is again, please?
No, I'll ask Judy to maybe provide the details.
So this resolution, i- in a nutshell, it's basically asking the province to, to continue to keep funding for childcare as a priority and at the top of their list. As you will see in item just above it, item number five, there's been a generous allocation made to the county of Renfrew to support the reopening of childcare. I, I believe what this resolution is about is, is to, for that support to continue.
Yes, supplementary, Council Jackno.
I would move, Mr. Chair, that we support the resolution as presented.
Do I have a seconder for that? Seconded by Council Love. Any further comments or questions on the, yes, Council Reinhold?
I'm on, I'm online now, right?
Yes, you are.
Ah, perfect. Yeah, and to look into a little more, it talks about about the provision of benefits for, you know, for, for parents who have to get back to work. And, and they can't do that if they, if they don't have some of this support, so I would, I'm definitely in support of it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then I'll call for a vote to support the resolution. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. Item number seven is the COVID nineteen Frequently Asked Questions for the Back to School Twenty Twenty and Twenty Twenty-one. And I just, Judy, if you can just provide a little more information. I know one of the things you told me was that based on the number of parents that have decided to not send their kids back to school, but participate in the virtual classroom, there isn't the same pressure on the childcare providers for spaces. And that's still holding true?
Yes, actually, we we're starting to build a fee subsidy waitlist that is substantial. But parents are not banging at the door to have their children placed in childcare immediately and urgently. What we're finding across the county is that families are being extremely patient with us in our slow reopening. We've chosen as a county amongst the providers that our philosophy is to go slow and steady and ensure that all regulations and health and safety components are abide by and that the children that are placed are in good health and safety standards. So the parents are walking that walk with us and and we're really quite impressed. It's it's a real, it's it's a real partnership that we're seeing right now. So it's very good.
Thank you, Judy. Any other comments? So item eight is the Childcare Funding to Support Working Parents. And that's, again, Judy, maybe a little more info. That's just the one-time funding at this point, correct?
This is actually, thank you for that question, Chair. This is, I was a little confused when I saw this news release because we had received the SURF funding. This is actually the can, the continuation of a of a federal provincial bilateral agreement promise for ELCC funding. So we've already allocated this funding to our our funding lines, hopeful that this funding would would continue. So it's not an extra amount that we weren't anticipating. We were just hopeful that it that it would continue, and it is. Good news.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, that is good news. And I have a question for you, Paul. I know Counselor Reinwald wanted to bring forward a recommendation on that amendment to the bill in the in Laura's report. Is that something that I would need a vote from the majority committee or is that just direction to staff?
He can bring that through you, Chair, to to your question and Counselor Reinwald's question. That can be brought up under New Business and the motion introduced. And that will deal with our requirements with respect to notice of motion. And then it can be brought forward into the County Council report.
So I would just address that and item seven under New Business.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think that's a fair way, a safe way to do it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So then we will, I'll look for a mover and a second for the adoption of the report as a whole as presented. Moved by Counselor Grill, seconded by Counselor Love, all in favor. That's carried. So that brings us to item seven, which is New Business. And that is then that and maybe Counselor Reinwald, you can help me with this. That staff prepare a letter of clarification or 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 explanation on the county's position where it relates to the amendment to the bill. Oh, you're you're still muted, Counselor Reinwald.
I'm trying to get back to that that part of the report. I don't remember what I said now. One moment.
Sure.
No.
I believe, as I recall, your comment was that we should take a position and maybe just a to clarify that Rentford County's experience as far as dealing with this situation, isn't the same as what it would be in Toronto or some of the major centers? Yes, Counselor Reinwald, go ahead.
Somewhat correct. I I was concerned about being a sort of the broad brush approach again to, you know, to all areas. And and we've proven in the past that that doesn't always work. And especially in Rentford County because of being a relatively rural area. And that is something that we should possibly bring to council for discussion and possibly move it forward if the timing is right.
Yes, Paul.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if we can deal with this through direction to staff and that staff be directed to prepare a an analysis of the the issue with respect. And I believe what we're talking about here is the, Laura, correct me if wrong, I'm calling it rent. I don't want to call it rent supplement, but I, in the report here, Laura, correct me, what what's the correct title?
Through you, Chair, to you, Paul. What what's happened is the or section of the bill speaks to refusal for certain arrears of rent. And the city of Toronto is taking a legal challenge against this bill. And so I I I'm, I believe that the bill as it sits right now, it states if a hearing is held in respect of an application under section sixty-nine for an order evicting a tenant based on arrears of rent arising in whole or in part during the period beginning March seventeenth, twenty twenty and ending on the prescribed date, in determining whether to exercise its powers under subsection, the board shall consider whether the landlord has attempted to negotiate an agreement with the tenant, including terms of payment for the arrears. So what what's what's happened is the bill as it and the section speaks to the requirement to how to for a landlord to put forward a payment plan with a tenant. The city of Toronto is wanting to bring forward a legal challenge to this. So the bill has passed. It's a legal challenge to what is newly been put in place. I I hope that clarifies.
If I may. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I I'm wondering if the appropriate thing to do in this case would be that we, that committee direct staff to develop a position for the county of Rentford on this particular piece of of legislation with respect to what with respect to what the city of Toronto has put forward and bring that actually back to committee so committee can endorse it in the month of October through a resolution. And then that resolution, should it get endorsed by committee, be debated by County Council.
Sounds good.
Okay. Oh, Chair, yeah.
Okay, so, yes, Counselor Jackno.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just wondering if you're looking for direction or emotion or whatever.
I believe it was just direction and looking at the show of hands and the thumbs up. I believe that is the 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 direction we're moving in.
Chair, if I may, can I confirm that direction with Evelyn for the purpose of the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to be a direction to develop a position for the county of Rentford on the Bill one eighty-four, section one eighty-three. It speaks to the requirement for the landlord to put forward a payment plan. And the city of Toronto is taking a stance. And I didn't get the rest, sorry.
And and then, and further that, the staff position be brought back to committee for further consideration with with a recommendation to County Council.
I got that. Okay, now, do we not need a mover and a second for this?
Yeah, you should have a mover and a second for that one and a vote.
Okay, moved by Counselor Reinwald, seconded by, do I have a second, by Counselor Grill, all in favor. And that's carried. Thank you very much. So we have no closed meeting. The date of the next meeting then will be Wednesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty. And I'll need a motion to adjourn. Can I get a mover and a second? Moved by Counselor Reinwald, seconded by Counselor Gears, all in favor. And that's carried as well. Thank you very much.
Before we leave.
Yeah.
I would just, I should have done this under New Business, but it's irregardless. I was just, I just wanted to reach out to Laura and Carol and Andrea and Judy for, I just want to express my appreciation for everything that you and your staff have been doing and continue to do within, you know, within this pandemic. The Social Services Department has done a remarkable job. And you usually don't hear about social services very much up in the Renshaw Hills, but we certainly hear it now. So you've been reaching out, you've been, and they've been, and people from this area have been reaching in. So that, you know, that's a really good thing. So it certainly doesn't go unnoticed. And I just wanted to personally thank you all, you know, for doing that, for all, you know, yourselves and your staff and keep up the great work.
Thank you, Counselor Reinwald. And I'm sure Laura will pass that on to all of her staff as well. Okay, so I think that concludes our media, oh, sorry, Counselor Grill, you had a comment.
I was waving goodbye.
Oh. Okay, good, goodbye.
See everybody. Thank you.